Call to order. Board meeting of the Windout School Board, Tuesday, June 24th, 2025, 7:00 PM here at City Hall 3200 Biddle Avenue. Roll call, please.
Member Bevan Partial?
Here.
Member Kane?
Here.
Member Kinney?
Here.
Member Lo Cicero?
Here.
Member Martinez?
Here.
Member Weber?
Here.
President Circovich?
Here, we have a quorum in perfect attendance. Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Recitation of the vision and mission statements. Trustee Bevan Partial will read the vision statement and Vice President Kane will read the mission statement.
A diverse, equitable, and inclusive community that develops resilient, innovative, and engaged individuals.
The mission statement, collaborating and inspiring to educate, engage, and empower all.
Thank you. Reading of the minutes, the proposed summary from the June 10th, 2025 work session is included in your packet. Secretary Martinez reviewed the summary and found it to be in order and acceptable as presented. May I have a motion, please?
I move approval of the proposed summary from the June 10th, 2025 work session be approved as presented.
Support.
Any discussion? Seeing none, please attach the roll.
Roll attached, motion carried.
Thank you. All right, special orders and reports. Dr. Anderson.
All right, well, I am happy to continue what we've started in our last work session. And we have some of our young people here who are already enjoying their summer break. But we brought them here because they are some of our scholarship winners. And so I'm going to start with Ms. Whitney Senobar, principal of Monroe Elementary, who's going to introduce you to some of the Mustangs who are our winners this year.
Parents and families, if you would like to take some pictures, please feel free to bring your cameras and stand right here behind any of the board members or Dr. Anderson. We have a great view and we want you to be able to see your stars faces and take pictures. So come on back, don't be shy. We have the best seat in the house.
All right, hi. Good evening. This is Breland Reese and Mauro Ramirez, and they are our scholarship winners from Monroe. So the way that we do our scholarship at Monroe is that the students actually help to pick the winners. So we did it, I've done it a few different ways at Monroe in the past, but we switched to having the students pick from their peers, and it's been going really well. So the students have to decide on a fellow classmate that is a model Mustang. They are showing leadership, they are kind, they're always looking out for others, they're just a great friend and an overall fantastic person. So these are our two winners. They are both from Ms. Mitchell's fifth grade class, and we are so proud of them. So what I'm going to do is share what some of their classmates said about them. So we'll start with Mauro. I believe Mauro deserves this award because he always stays determined and respects himself. An example is when Mauro is solving a math page in fourth grade, and it was so tough that he was able to solve it, so then he moved on to fifth grade and sixth grade and kept moving up. Another student said that they chose Mauro because he's always on task and respectful, he's kind and responsible, he shows respect to others, and he helps others learn. Mauro shows others websites or things that they're supposed to be on, he's always kind, and he's really good at math. Another student said that I believe that Mauro deserves this scholarship because he is very smart and funny. One time, Mauro was playing Super Mario 64 on his computer, and he was making silly Mario noises while wearing a Mario hat, and I thought that was super funny. He is also very smart, because I asked him what he got on his test three times, and all three times, he got 100%. Another student said that Mauro's very kind and generous, and another student said, I think Mauro should be nominated for the school scholarship because he is kind and works hard. He is very intelligent, and he cares about learning in class, he always participates, and he tries his hardest to find answers to problems. Mauro is so kind, he's always willing to help other people when they are struggling. Let's give Mauro a round of applause. All right, and our next winner is Breland Reese. So here are some things that her classmates said about her. Breland is very nice, and she helps people out when they need it, and she is so funny. Breland should have the fifth grade scholarship because she is kind and helpful. Breland is helpful because when we were taking, or when we were walking to media, I forgot my Chromebook, and she got my Chromebook for me, so I didn't have to. Another example is when I had trouble finding the paper around my box for the volume zoo, she was able to fold it for me. Another student said, Bree is kind and helpful. She was kind when I was upset, and Breland asked me what was wrong, and I told her nothing, but she knew something was wrong. So she was helpful when in fifth grade, she would tell Ms. Mitchell, and the whole class would help to clean the classroom up, and even if she was tired, she always wanted to help. Another student said that they picked Breland to win because she is kind, welcoming, caring, and respectful. Another friend had a volume zoo story, so we'll tell that one. Breland is welcoming and caring because during the volume zoo, my group was being rude to me, and they left me out of the group. Since Bree saw I had nobody to work with, Breland invited me to her group, and that made me very happy. Why I put her is that she's very kind, because whenever people are sad, she can put smiles on their face in the blink of an eye. And yesterday, when I had nobody to hang out with, Bree said, do you want to come over and be with us? And the next thing I knew, I had a bunch of new people hanging out with me. So yeah, that's why I picked her.
Congratulations, Bree.
And those are our winners from Monroe. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'm going to invite up Ms. Lipinski, who is going to tell us about some of our Jefferson Jaguars, who also received some honors at the end of the school year this year.
I freaked them out and told them they had to give a speech, so they're still hoping I'm lying. We at Jefferson also do a student voted on scholarship. Ours is named after George Schoenfeld, who was a teacher at Jefferson, and it's called the Respect Scholarship. When the students are given their instructions to vote, they're told, don't just vote for your best friend. Your best friend may be great, but you also have to have a reason. And one of the things that we talk to them about at our school, we use, we have a motto at our school that Jaguars roar with kindness. This year, we talked about, and the roar stands for being responsible, on task, attentive, and respectful. So if that's referred to anywhere, that's why those words keep coming up, because the kids know that. So I'm going to read them the way I did when we presented them on the last day of school, so I don't give their name until the very end. I'm going to start with our young lady here. She is helpful and kind. I picked her because she is kind and sweet and awesome. I chose her because she is nice to me and kind, and she will be a great one. She is kind to her teachers, I agree, she was in my homeroom, and will always be kind to her friends. I think she deserves a scholarship because she's very kind and respectful, and she does her work on time and arrives on time. Thank goodness, because she was one of our first safety captains or service squad captains at our school, and she did a fantastic job. She is kind to people and is a good person in all honesty. She is smart, kind, nice, funny, and responsible. So great in math and super nice, great in the classroom. I picked her because she is kind, respectful, and helpful. She is smart, always kind, and she is hardworking. She is always kind, respectful, a great student, smart, and whenever I'm upset, she always tried to make me laugh and smile. Ladies and gentlemen, Ms. Leila Perry. Now my young gentleman. I think he should get the scholarship because he is very respectful and always on time, and he gets his work done on time. Also, one of my service squad members who worked with the kindergarten and the kindergarten teachers threatened me when I asked if I could move him, so he had to stay at kindergarten all year. One time, when I was sad, he helped me. I chose him because he is so kind to me all the time. He, and every time he bumps into me, he says, sorry. He's so kind, he should be the one. I picked him because he is kind, fun to hang out with, and he is smart. He is hardworking, smart, and always has an upbeat attitude. Yes, he does. Again, in my homeroom, so. He has been my friend since first grade, and me and him have never argued, and he almost always helps me up when I get hurt in football. And he is very respectful and responsible. He is a kind and great student. When I see him, he is always doing the right thing. He is always doing our roar. I think he should get the scholarship because he is showing his roar everywhere, even outside of school, and always is kind to others. He has always been a good example, and when I was in third grade, he would always try to include me in things. He is so kind and caring and respectful, he's never in fights and cares about everyone. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Jack Smangler. Thank you so much.
All right, and now I'd like to invite up Mr. and Mrs. Rikowski from Wilson Middle School, who are going to introduce you to some of our warriors who have received some honors recently.
Good evening. It is such a delight to be here to recognize two awesome students that we have at Wilson that won our Al DeFran Scholarship Award. Before we tell you wonderful things about these two, we would like to let you know why this award was created. The Al DeFran Scholarship Award was created in 1989 by the staff and administration at Wilson Middle School to honor longtime principal, Mr. Al DeFran. Mr. DeFran was deeply respected and admired for his strong leadership and high expectations, not just for others, but for himself. He believed in treating everyone with respect and expected students to do the same, both towards staff and their peers. The award recognizes his legacy while also celebrating two eighth grade students who demonstrate exceptional leadership, academic excellence, and live out the values of the warrior way. Each recipient receives a $500 scholarship, a trophy, and their name engraved on the Wilson Honor Plaque. The selection process is a thoughtful one. Staff members vote twice, first to narrow the pool down to the top five girls and the top five boys, then again to choose one male and one female recipient. This is not an easy decision. Our staff takes it seriously and considers many qualities, such as extracurricular involvement, school spirit, academic excellence, and overall character. I'm going to give the mic over to Ms. Rikowski to talk about Lilly.
Lilly has worked so hard these last three years to be an exemplary student and a role model to all. She has continuously made a conscious effort to be the best person she can be every single day. There have been times when Lilly could have followed the crowd, which is easy to do in middle school, but instead chose to rise above and do the right thing. We are so incredibly proud of her and admire her integrity. Lilly is a young lady who does the right thing even when no one is watching. Lilly was a web leader and a peer mentor. She also participated in cross-country and track. Congratulations, Lilly. This is well deserved. And if I can just add something, Lilly is always smiling. It is completely infectious, and I am sure there have been days when Lilly has not been having the best day, but when you see her in the hall, you would never know it. And when she smiles at you, you can't help but smile back and be in a great mood. So Lilly, this is well deserved.
I did not have the pleasure of working with Lilly, but I did have the pleasure of working with Jacoby this year. And I'm really going to try to keep this as short as possible. Jacoby is a model student in every way possible. Jacoby leads with the example he sets for others. His calm and kind manner has made him a well-liked and respected member of the eighth grade class. Along with being an exceptional student all three years of middle school, Jacoby has also stayed very involved. He's been a member of the band, baseball team, broadcasting program, and a web leader. Jacoby is able to work well with others and shows flexibility when faced with challenging tasks or projects. He has made community partnership projects with the Michigan Cookie Project, a nonprofit that helps adults with disabilities, and also Windout Nutrition. We look forward to seeing all the great things he will accomplish in high school. We know with his amazing leadership skills, he'll make a big impact, no matter what he chooses to do.
Thank you, and congratulations to all of our winners. Any board comments?
Just fabulous. Congratulations.
All right, so I do have a little bad news and a little good news. So the bad news is, is that these are normally on school nights, and I usually let people go. Good news is it's summer, so you can stay and watch the budget presentation. It's only about an hour. That's other good news. Actually, no. You are, you are able to dismiss, we'll take a short little break. If you'd like to exit out, it has been a record heat wave for June, and there is an ice cream store right around the corner, so might be a good time to, to check it out. So we thank you guys for coming, and thank you for coming on your break. I hope you're all having a safe and enjoyable summer. And we will see you guys officially again in the fall. So if you'd like to exit now, you can. Or you can stay and watch the budget.
They're running now.
Yes.
No one wants to hear.
Scared everybody out.
It's not riveting. It's not riveting.
We'll just let, just take a minute to let the audience kind of file out. All right, so at this time, we have the 2024, 25, and 25, 26 budgets hearing. Director of Finance, Brandy Nuster, will present the summary of 24, 25 final budget amendment and discuss the 25, 26 budget. And then during, we will also immediately following that have hearing of the public. So all persons who desire to be heard should be given the opportunity to speak on these two budgets and then on any other agenda items or concerns after that. All right.
Good evening. Please excuse my speaking voice. I don't have much of one, but so, oh, do we have a presentation?
Yep, there it goes.
There it is.
So again, just the 24, 25 final budget, the 25, 26 original budget, and also our tax levy hearing. This is required to be voted on and passed by June 30th of every year. Next slide, please. So this is just our agenda. We're going to go over the budget overview, look at our local revenue and property tax sources, 2025 tax levy, revenues, expenditures, and some fund historical data. So the budget overview. So our, our budgets consist of many different funds. Our general fund is, that's our biggest fund that we have, that's where most of our operating expenditures come out of. That is what our fund balances that we watch. And that, I'm sorry, and that also includes our federal funds as well, like our grants and things. We also have our debt service fund, and that is, we collect debt for our tax levy, and then we pay it out for our bonds. It's principal and interest on that. We also have special revenue funds. We have Act 18, which is our largest. It's our TLC, Joe Brighton and Madison, it's our center programs, and those are funded by the county. And then we also have our cafeteria fund, which is mostly federal funds. And then we have our school activity funds, which are held at the buildings. And those are for things that they raise money for, and then they spend those funds. We also have capital project funds that include a building and site fund and a sinking fund. Okay, so our local property taxes, we have several sources. We have our non-homestead, which is our businesses and commercial, vacation homes, rental properties, does not include primary residences. So these all pay 18 mils. It is used for general fund operating purposes. The current levy expires December of 2025, but if you recall, we took that to vote in November, and we renewed that. And that new one expires December of 2035. We also have the state education tax, which is six mils. This is paid by residences. And then we have our sinking fund. The voters approved 1.75 mils in March of 2020. This expires December of 2029. The debt fund is, I'm sorry, it was renewed, it was passed in February of 2015, and that is three and a half mils. So the next slide kind of shows a summary of how our taxes, like where we're receiving them from. So the six mils that residents pay, those go up to the state and then are distributed. That's the six mils. And then the 18 mils is our operating, debt three and a half, and then our sinking actually gets reduced by headly. So even though I said it was 1.75 that we passed, we actually only get to levy 1.67. That number gets reduced slightly every year. Our taxes are spread 50% winter and 50% summer. Some key assumptions for revenue that was used for 24, 25. This was based on a blended student count of 4,257. This is 90% funded from our state, from our state counts from fall of '24, and it also has 10% of our spring of '24. So it's actually from our prior school year. The state of Michigan has not approved our budget for 25, 26. However, we made a budget assumption that we're assuming a $392 increase per child. That would bring us to $10,000 of state aid. For comparison purposes, we received a 0% increase last year and 458 the year before. We also have a reset enhancement millage. This is levied through the fall of 2028, unless it's renewed. This results in approximately 1.7 million, and is mostly used for enhancement of technology. Next slide. Okay, and this is just kind of a summary of our revenues, and this is kind of the progression of the year, all rolled up into just the categories of local, state, federal, and incoming transfers. So you can see the 23, 24 audited number, and then it progresses to the original budget, the final budget, I'm sorry, the first revision, and then the final revision, and then the proposed original. Next slide is key assumptions for expenditures. This is based on our current 24, 25 contractual obligations. These account for approximately 80% of our budget. The expenditures for 25, 26 are carried forward. And this again just shows the progression of our 23, 24 audited, the original for 24, 25, the first revision, the final, and then our proposed original. Next page. This is our revenues, all rolled up into one. If you recall, I said our general fund also houses our federal funds, so these numbers are added into here to show what our fund balance will be. So we're projecting a fund balance of 7.8 million. This is approximately 12 and a half percent if we use board policy, which is using prior year expenditures. If we were to use a state way to do it, which would be the current year revenues, it would be 12.3. The whole thing is similar. 25, 26, with our best guess, as of right now, we're looking at 6.7 million. This would be approximately a 10.7% fund balance. However, there's a lot of work to do, and we still don't have numbers from the state yet. So this is based on the assumption of a 50 child loss or 50 FTE loss, a $10,000 foundation allowance, and a carryforward of 25, 20, 24, 25 expenditures. And then we just have a little bit of historical data. Next slide. Thank you. So revenue trends, this just kind of shows how our revenue is, like how it's split up. If you notice, the green is the most. That is our state funding. So that's not only our state aid foundation allowance, but our categoricals as well. One of the big increases you'll see is our retirement. So the state will give us money for retirement that we have to count as income, and then it also counts as an expense as well when we pay it back. The expenditure trends are on the next slide. The big expenditures that you see are instruction. Those are in the top color, it's like a greenish color. And then the second one down are instructions of added needs. So those are like special education and vocab. And the next slide is enrollment trends. You can see how the enrollment has, has gone over the past several years. This one actually shows current year data, just because our student counts have to be into the state in order to calculate our state aid. So these are a little more current. And then the last slide is our fund balance. There we go. Historical fund balance, you'll see the baseline is 10%. That's the blue line. And you can see where it kind of peaked a little bit during COVID, maybe slightly after, right, because we had all those funds coming in. And that's kind of like the COVID peak right there. And that is based on, it's not quite what we use for our board policy. That is the current year fund balance divided by current year revenues. Our board policy is divided by current year, I'm sorry, prior year expenditures. And so that's all I have.
Okay, board members, questions or comments?
I'm sorry, I'm really struggling to speak.
You did well, thank you. Questions or comments for Brandy?
No questions.
We covered this somewhat at our work session on the 10th. We also had a work session today where we had more time to look it over and be clear. Anything you want to bring up now? Because this is kind of just, just open discussion at this point. No, everybody's point. No? Everybody's good?
I guess just make the, the community aware that a lot of this is on, made on the basis that we don't have concrete information from the state as far as what funding we're going to get.
That's correct. And usually, um, we, we don't always have anything concrete, but we do have a good idea of where we kind of sit. Um, and this year's a little bit unusual that we don't, that we don't have, you know, but we did the best with what we could. So.
Thank you for all of this.
Thank you.
We appreciate the work. And please extend that to your office as well. I know it's a busy time of year for you, closing out one and then projecting the next one.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Brandy.
Okay, so this is still hearing of the public now. Wind Up Public Schools Board of Education welcomes public discourse. Now is the portion of the meeting where the public may address the board. Those who wish to speak should approach the podium, state their name, and address the board. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Members of the board and district employees will not answer questions during public commentary. Is there anyone wishing to address the board at this time? Seeing none, we will move on to the action agenda.
Okay, we do have a lengthy agenda, so we will dig right in. Board of Education memberships must be approved by the board at a public meeting. The administration recommends for the 25, 26 school year, the following memberships with the following organizations. Metro Detroit Bureau of School Studies provides up-to-date information on policy, law, legislation, and professional development. The 2025, 26 membership cost is $2,502. The Michigan High School Athletic Association sets statewide rules, league, area, state competitions, and are the organization behind all of our sports grades, 6 through 12. There is no cost for this membership. And finally, the Michigan Association of School Boards. It provides educational, legislative, and legal advice for the district and the school board members. The 25, 26 membership cost is $8,247.11.
I move approval of the 2025, 2026 memberships to the Metro Detroit Bureau of School Studies in the amount of $2,502. The Michigan High School Athletic Association at no cost to the district, and to the Michigan Association of School Boards in the amount of $8,247.11.
Support.
Any discussion? These, the breakdown was in your packet for what services these provide to us that are quite extensive and, and helpful?
Very helpful.
Any, uh, we're good with discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Member Bevan Partial?
Yes.
Member Kane?
Yes.
Member Kinney?
Yes.
Member Lo Cicero?
Yes.
Member Martinez?
Yes.
Member Weber?
Yes.
President Circovich?
Yes, motion carries.
Each year, it is necessary for Wind Up Public Schools to borrow funds in order to meet its cash flow needs during the months of August through December. It is anticipated that our borrowing requirement for this year will be no more than 5 million. The Director of Finance and I are recommending the board approve the resolution to participate in the Michigan Municipal Bonding Authority State Aid Note Program, authorizing the issuance of state aid anticipation notes.
I move approval of the enclosed resolution to participate in the Michigan Municipal Bonding Authority State Aid Note Program, authorizing the issuance of state aid anticipation notes totaling no more than 5 million for the 2025, 2026 school year.
Support.
Any discussion? We talked about this at our June 10th work session as well. This is pretty standard, and this just allows us to meet our, our payroll and other expenses for the beginning of the school year until we figure out, until we get our state aid. All right, seeing no discussion, let's take a vote, please.
Member Kane?
Yes.
Member Kinney?
Yes.
Member Lo Cicero?
Yes.
Member Martinez?
Yes.
Member Weber?
Yes.
Member Bevan Partial?
Yes.
President Circovich?
Yes, motion carries.
All right. The 2024, 2025 fiscal year final budget amendment, as recommended by the Director of Finance, Brandy Nussar, was discussed at a work session held on June 10th, 2025, and during the public hearing portion of this meeting. The Director of Finance and I recommend adoption of the 2024, 2025 final budget amendment as proposed.
I move approval of the resolution for adoption of the 2024, 25 final budget amendment as proposed.
Support.
Any discussion, final thoughts before we take a vote on this? All right, roll call, please.
Member Kinney?
Yes.
Member Lo Cicero?
Yes.
Member Martinez?
Yes.
Member Weber?
Yes.
Member Bevan Partial?
Yes.
Member Kane?
Yes.
President Circovich?
Yes, motion carries.
The 2025, 2006 fiscal year original budget, as recommended by the Director of Finance, Brandy Nussar, was discussed at a work session held on June 10th, 2025, and June 24th, 2025, and during the public hearing portion of this meeting. The 2025, 2026 fiscal year original budget is an extension of the 2024, 25 final budget amendment, and will be updated with a revision in the fall. The Director of Finance and I recommend extension of the 2024, 25 budget as the 25, 26 original budget as proposed.
I move approval of the extension of the 2024, 2025 budget as the 2025, 2026 original budget as proposed.
Support.
Any discussion? We just heard this presentation. Last call, any discussion, comments, or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Member Lo Cicero?
Yes.
Member Martinez?
Yes.
Member Weber?
Yes.
Member Bevan Partial?
Yes.
Member Kane?
Yes.
Member Kinney?
Yes.
President Circovich?
Yes, motion carries.
The Direct, Director of Finance, Brandy Nussar, has prepared a resolution to establish the 2025 tax levy, including the approval of the L4029 to authorize 18 mils for operating purposes on non-homestead property, 3.50 mils for debt fund purposes on all property, and 1.6767 mils for the sinking fund purposes on all property. Taxes are to be levied 50% on the summer and 50% on the winter tax collections.
I move adoption of the resolution for the 2025 tax levy, authorizing a tax of 18 mils on the non-homestead property, a tax of 3.5 mils on all property for debt fund purposes, and 1.6767 mils for the sinking fund purposes for the 2025, 2026 school year.
Support.
Any discussion? We had this as part of our work session also, and we just talked about this. All right, roll call, please.
Member Martinez?
Yes.
Member Weber?
Yes.
Member Bevan Partial?
Yes.
Member Kane?
Yes.
Member Kinney?
Yes.
Member Lo Cicero?
Yes.
President Circovich?
Yes, motion carries.
The Director of Curriculum, Jessica Shipman, and myself recommend approval to pilot Envision Mathematics for the 2025, 26 school year. All material, software, and professional development totals $51,025 and will be paid using general funds.
I move the approval of, to pilot Envision Mathematics for the 2025, 2026 school year. All material, software, and professional development totals $51,025 and will be paid using general funds.
Support.
Any discussion? We talked about this at our work session on the 10th. Jessica went over it with us, talk about what we would be doing for the next year. All right, seeing no discussion, take a roll call, please.
Member Weber?
Yes.
Member Bevan Partial?
Yes.
Member Kane?
Yes.
Member Kinney?
Yes.
Member Lo Cicero?
Yes.
Member Martinez?
Yes.
President Circovich?
Yes, motion carries.
The Director of Curriculum, Jessica Shipman, and myself recommend approval for the collaborative classroom materials for reading and writing, and a student app for extra practice and progress monitoring. Small group instruction manipulative kits, classroom decodable libraries, and student independent libraries. The professional development plan, development plan also covers K5 implementation training, onsite coaching support sessions, and leadership training to support and monitor implementation. The total cost of the collaborative classroom materials, software, and professional development is $120,985. Additional elements could be added, up to $140,000, if the 35M grant is approved for more.
I move approval for the collaborative classroom materials, software, and professional development for up to $140,000 to be paid using 35M grant funds.
Support.
Any discussion? We talked about this, the shipment is here, if you have other questions about this, or what we need to do for purchasing these. And then there's some options for us depending on what the grant funding looks like. All right, seeing no discussion, take a roll call, please.
Member Bevan Partial?
Yes.
Member Kane?
Yes.
Member Kinney?
Yes.
Member Lo Cicero?
Yes.
Member Martinez?
Yes.
Member Weber?
Yes.
President Circovich?
Yes, motion carries.
The Director of Curriculum, Jessica Shipman, and myself recommend approval for the Institute for Excellence in Math Coaching, IEE, for a quote of $43,750, and a focused instructional model at a quote of $2,500. The total cost of the IEE and FIM is $46,250 to be paid using 31A at-risk and Title II grant funds. The quote includes a rider that specifies that this is contingent on Title II and 31 at-risk funds being available.
I move the approval for the IEE math coaching for a quote of $43,750, and an FIM or focus instructional model at a quote of $2,500. The total cost of the IEE and FIM is $46,250 to be paid using 31A at-risk and Title II grant funds. The quote includes a rider that specifies this is contingent on the Title II and 31A at-risk grant funds being available.
Support.
Any discussion? We talked about this at our work session also. Jessica gave us a good presentation about, uh, this and about the coaches that we've worked with in the past, um, and also about the contingency of the grant funds being available. Everyone's good to take a vote? No discussion?
No.
Please call the roll.
Member Kane?
Yes.
Member Kinney?
Yes.
Member Lo Cicero?
Yes.
Member Martinez?
Yes.
Member Weber?
Yes.
Member Bevan Partial?
Yes.
President Circovich?
Yes, motion carries.
All right. Due to transfers, we need to hire an assistant principal at Wilson and an assistant principal at Roosevelt. After following appropriate personal protocol and completing team interviews, the Director of Human Resources and I recommend probationary professional contracts be awarded to Stacy Bukowski at Roosevelt and Lee Kubicki at Wilson, effective for the 2025, 2026 school year.
I move probationary professional contracts be awarded to Stacy Bukowski at Roosevelt and Lee Kubicki at Wilson, effective for the 2025, 2026 school year.
Support.
Any discussion? It was in, it was in your packet. We discussed these also at our work session. Roll call, please.
Member Kinney?
Yes.
Member Lo Cicero?
Yes.
Member Martinez?
Yes.
Member Weber?
Yes.
Member Bevan Partial?
Yes.
Member Kane?
Yes.
President Circovich?
Yes, motion carries. And those, those folks will be coming in later.
They will be here in July. Yeah.
Thank you.
After following appropriate personal protocol and completing team interviews for the two open assistant principal positions, the Director of Human Resources and I recommend the addition of an interim assistant principal position at Roosevelt for the 2025, 2026 school year. We recommend, we recommend this position be awarded to Brenton Petrick.
I move approval of the addition of an interim assistant principal position at Roosevelt for the 2025, 2026 school year, with the position being awarded to Brenton Petrick.
Support.
Any discussion? We talked about this at our work session as well. All right, uh, roll call, please.
Member Lo Cicero?
Yes.
Member Martinez?
Yes.
Member Weber?
Yes.
Member Bevan Partial?
Yes.
Member Kane?
Yes.
Member Kinney?
Yes.
President Circovich?
Yes, motion carries.
All right. Due to a resignation, we need to hire a director at the Early Childhood Center. We would like to add this position to the district as a non-unit contract as presented. This position would be effective for the 2025, 2026 school year.
I move approval to add the position of the Early Childhood Center Director to the district as a non-unit contract as presented. This position would be effective for the 2025, 2026 school year.
Support.
Any discussion? We talked about this, and we talked about the range and, and for the posting. Okay, seeing no discussion, take a roll call, please.
Member Martinez?
Yes.
Member Weber?
Yes.
Member Bevan Partial?
Yes.
Member Kane?
Yes.
Member Kinney?
Yes.
Member Lo Cicero?
Yes.
President Circovich?
Yes, motion carries.
The Director of Human Resources, Tanya Brody, and I would like to recommend, uh, that Wind Up Public Schools participate in the Talent Together program. We have been participating in this for a while. The program encourages current staff members who are interested in teaching to apprentice under a current staff member. We would like to enroll four apprentices who have applied for this program. They will be compensated at 80% of BA Step 1 at $36,762.43 each, and that will be funded by Talent Together for the 2025 school year.
I move approval of the Wind Up Public Schools to participate in the Talent Together program, enrolling four apprentices who will have, who have applied for this program at 80% of a BA One Step at $36,762.43 each, to be funded by Talent Together for the 2025, 2026 school year.
Support.
Okay, Tanya talked about this at our work session with us. We reviewed the program. I think it's a great addition for us and a great way to kind of grow our own talent. Any comments or discussion?
No.
All right, roll call, please.
Member Weber?
Yes.
Member Bevan Partial?
Yes.
Member Kane?
Yes.
Member Kinney?
Yes.
Member Lo Cicero?
Yes.
Member Martinez?
Yes.
President Circovich?
Yes, motion carries.
Due to retirements and transfers, we need to hire teachers for the 2025, 2026 school year. After following appropriate personal protocol and completing team interviews, the Director of Human Resources and I recommend probationary teaching contracts be awarded to Natasha Zeichler at Joe Brighton, Caitlin Hess at Garfield, Tara Salas at the Lincoln Center, Chelsea Mullins at Wilson, and Donald LaFou at Garfield.
I move approval of the probationary teaching contracts be awarded to Natasha Zeichler, Caitlin Hess, Tara Salas, Chelsea Mullins, and Donald LaFou, effective for the 2025, 2026 school year.
Support.
Any discussion? Handouts are in your packet. Roll call, please.
Member Bevan Partial?
Yes.
Member Kane?
Yes.
Member Kinney?
Yes.
Member Lo Cicero?
Yes.
Member Martinez?
Yes.
Member Weber?
Yes.
President Circovich?
Yes, motion carries.
At this time of year, we approve central office non-bargaining contracts. The following employees have been evaluated and have done an excellent job. I recommend an extension for the 2020, through the 2026, 2027 school year with the salary schedules as presented. It's for Bernie Bowers, Director of Operations, Tanya Brody, Director of Human Resources, Brandy Nussar, Director of Finance, Lisa Voitovich, Director of Special Education, Jessica Shipman, Director of Curriculum and Student Achievement, Justin Ellsworth, Director of Technology, George Perdue, Director of Media Services, Sterling McLean, Operations Supervisor, Rebecca Bearden, Administrative Assistant to the Superintendent, Sharina Yakovich, Head Bookkeeper, Elizabeth, Elizabeth Kiransky, Administrative Assistant to the Human Resources Director, and Amanda Omodio, Grant and Program Coordinator.
I move approval of the central office non-bargaining contracts. The following employees, Bernie Bowers, Lisa Voitovich, Jessica Shipman, Justin Ellsworth, George Perdue, Sterling McLean, Rebecca Bearden, Serena Yakotovich, Elizabeth Kiransky, and Amanda, Amanda Omodio, have been evaluated and have done an excellent job. I recommend an extension for the 2026, 2027 school year with the salary schedule as presented.
Support.
Any discussion? We have these in our packet, and we talked about this at the work session as well. All right, seeing no discussion, roll, roll call, please.
Member Kane?
Yes.
Member Kinney?
Yes.
Member Lo Cicero?
Yes.
Member Martinez?
Yes.
Member Weber?
Yes.
Member Bevan Partial?
Yes.
President Circovich?
Yes, motion carries.
As reviewed during the June 10th work session, uh, we are recommending moving our property and casualty, casualty insurance to SETSEG beginning July 1st, 2025 for a one-year contract.
I move approval for moving our property and casualty insurance to SETSEG beginning July 1st, 2025 for a one-year contract.
Support.
Any discussion? This was discussed at our work session as well. Handouts are in your packet. All right, roll call, please.
Member Kinney?
Yes.
Member Lo Cicero?
Yes.
Member Martinez?
Yes.
Member Weber?
Yes.
Member Bevan Partial?
Yes.
Yes.
Member Kane?
Yes.
President Circovich?
Yes, motion carries.
The Director of Technology, Justin Ellsworth, and myself recommend approval for the installation quote of large meeting space audiovisual upgrades installation by Forte, formerly AVI, at the national bid purchasing cost of $53,406.65 to be paid for using Wayne County Enhancement Milletage Funds.
I move approval for the installation quote of large meeting space audiovisual upgrades installation by Forte, formerly AVI, at the national bid purchasing cost of $53,406.65 to be paid for using Wayne County Enhancement Milletage Funds.
Support.
Any discussion? Mr. Ellsworth is here. If you have questions, we had the presentation about this in our work session as well, and all the materials were in your packet to see what we're getting for this. All right, roll call, please.
Member Lo Cicero?
Yes.
Member Martinez?
Yes.
Member Weber?
Yes.
Member Bevan Partial?
Yes.
Member Kane?
Yes.
Member Kinney?
Yes.
President Circovich?
Yes, motion carries.
The Director of Technology, Justin Ellsworth, and myself recommend approval for the purchase of 70 additional Chromebooks to the March 18th, 2025 Chromebook Approval. Technology recommends the purchase of 70 Chromebooks from SEHI, SEHI?
Yeah, SEHI.
SEHI?
Yeah, SEHI.
Computer Products Incorporated at a statewide cooperative bid purchasing price of $26,936, plus any tariff increases priced up to an additional 25%, paid for using Wayne County Enhancement Milletage Funds.
I move approval for the purchase of 70 Chromebooks from SEHI Computer Products, Inc. at the statewide cooperative bid purchasing price of $26,936, plus any tariff increased prices up to an additional 25%, paid for using Wayne County Enhancement Milletage Funds.
Support.
Okay, any discussion? If you recall, we approved those earlier in March to try to head off tariffs, but we need a few more, so we're going to approve the additional funding now. Everyone's good?
Yep.
All right, motion, please, or roll call, please, sorry.
Member Martinez?
Yes.